Good evening, we will go ahead and get started. With the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Alum.
Yes.
Odie.
Yes.
Saxor is absent.
Scott?
Yes.
Bell is absent.
All right, with that, if there are no changes to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So move.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. No conflict of interest or dis- no contract of interest disclosure or waiver request this evening. Takes us to approval of the minutes from our regular meetings on April 8th and April 22nd. If there are no questions, concerns, additions or deletions, I would make, I would take a motion to present. Geez.
So move.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Community input? I don't believe there is any this evening. So that takes us to financial items. Mr. Lundberg, whenever you'd like to take over.
Okay, I didn't have too many things noticed, so I'll entertain any questions you guys had. I had page two, Architecture Incorporated. We're back with Eastside Elementary Project, so the architect fees are showing up again. And then, may have been the only one I noted, a lot of reoccurring type bills this time of year. $3,750 advance payment breakdown is there for your review. $159,000 of pay vouchers. World's record. Lastly, food service bills, $212,862.
Any questions on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So move.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, the cash report for the month of April. It's a low month of the year, of our fiscal year, April is. On the third column reading down, $5,575,000 coming in. We had $4,036,000 revenues and $4.4 million of dispersments left. $5,215,000 at the end of April. $5,400,000 in the general fund, $130,000 in the special education fund, $67,000 in the enterprise fund, and a negative $382,388. Those are all the architect fees for the new project. The $4,036,000 is itemized in the next two pages. In May, we'll start to reseed our second half of the tax draw, so that'll shoot back up. Investment report of $3.6 million at 5%. South Dakota fit. Payroll and benefits summary. The payroll for the month of April was $2,840,000. Slightly above our $2.7 million normal payroll. Majority of the reason is a five-week pay period. Financial statements were 83% of the year fiscal year complete. Revenues are there for your review. Most of those funds are just a little bit under. Lot of growth in the property tax valuation, so that affects the percentage-wise, or the percentages, so that'll start to be streaming in in March and May and June. On the expenditure side, the general fund is 81.31% expended versus 82.36% at this time last year. That is reflective of a 1% decrease right now. I'm predicting they'll be, at the end of the year, will be a 1.5% less than budgeted expended. Hopefully, and crossing my fingers for a couple ticks more than that even, 1.6 or 1.7. But my projection right now is 1.5%, which would put it at $600,000 under the budget Capital outlay fund, 82% expended. Special education fund, 85% versus 80.36% last year. It's running strong, or I'll use the superintendent's words, hot, again, this month and in this year. And you'll see in the next year's budget, similar trend. And then the bond redemption fund. Food service fund is pretty consistent, showing $468,000 net loss at the end of April versus $185,000 budgeted loss. That'll be trimmed back next year with some meal price increases. $271,229 in the trust and agency statement. Any questions on the?
Paul, I want to just back up. Architectural fees, is that a percent of what they project will be the cost of the building? Is that what the architectural fees are?
Ah, that's about 20% of their total architect fees will be a million eight, I think. 5% of 35 million. I'm not smart enough to do that math. 10% would be 3.5 million. So 1.8, I think, are the total projected fees for the thing. So the $338,000 is just what they've completed up to this point. And they're start cranking, because by the time they go out to bids, it'll be 80% of the architect's work done.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve financial report as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lundberg. General business items, administration report, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get started, just want to give a giant shout-out to the Valley Springs Student Council. You will note there's a token of appreciation there for each of you respective board members. They distributed those last week to staff for Teacher Appreciation Week, also highlighting the celebration that they will hold on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Valley Springs Elementary. So for all of those that are out in the public, listening and interested, Valley Springs Elementary will have their celebration on Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Would just note that we're going to be, I'll include that in a communication here tomorrow to all of our respective Brandon Valley families. Which brings me right into our strategic planning process. Currently in the process of reviewing, evaluating, and revising that plan. Right now, there is a strategic planning survey open for our community and our families. That was set to close on May 10th. I'm going to extend it one more week and close it on the 17th, and just give anyone an opportunity that hasn't yet done that, one final shout-out, or one final chance. So they'll be receiving that communication here tomorrow. Appreciate everyone who's participated thus far. Budget process continues to roll tonight. You'll receive the preliminary budget presentation, and then in July, we'll hold our public hearing, and there will be potentially action. As Mr. Lundberg commented, our Eastside Elementary project is kicking back up. We'll be working with the committee in terms of naming that respective building. We'll work through that process here over the course of the next couple months. But just want to get the timeline established for everyone. So at this point in time, our tentative timeline is to release bids in early July. Bids will be opened on August 8th. That's a Thursday. That gives us the opportunity to review those bids, et cetera, and then we can bring forward a recommendation, and we will do that at the first board meeting in August. Excuse me. And then June 2026 is project completion, and then we look to open that building in the fall of 2026 for the 26, '27 school year. Number of South Dakota Department of Education items, just items I want to note, because they will have impacts in the future. The first one is the SLO, or Student Learning Objective Component of Teacher Evaluation. Before we were told, or earlier this year, we were told that the DOE was going to change that and make it optional for schools. The board that makes that determination said, "No, we don't necessarily think so." So there is no change to teacher evaluation for next year. With that being said, we were not planning on changing our process anyway. We were going to kind of evaluate after next year and see where we wanted to go, but that didn't happen, so no change, and no change at the state level. Frontline teacher evaluation software, we were informed that after next year, that will no longer be provided, so we will evaluate our options throughout the fall of 2024 and try and have something decided by, obviously, by winter when we get back into the budget creation process. Our sped review was set up for next year. That has been kicked back one year to the '25, '26 school year. The ACT exam will become the 11th grade assessment effective the 2025, '26 school year. The National Career Readiness Certificate, or the NRCRC as it's known, after this upcoming school year, will no longer be provided by the state, so we will have to make a determination if that's something that we want to do or not. I would tell you that there's a number of things at play there, as the NRCRC is an assessment that can be utilized currently for the college, career, and life readiness aspect of School Performance Index. I don't know if that will continue to be the case moving forward, so we'll have to wait and see exactly what they do with the School Performance Index before we make any respective decisions. And then lastly, the GED program is moving to the Department of Education. It was previously at the Department of Labor. Our second meeting in May, we'll hear from the Brandon Valley Intermediate School. And then lastly, our last day for students is a two-hour early dismissal on May 23rd, and then our staff has a half-day workshop on May 24th. Madam Chair, that is all I have this evening. Would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lundberg, anything additional tonight?
I did fail to communicate with Mr. Larson about school board petitions. You two were the only two that turned them in. There's always a chance that something could come in from the mail, but highly unlikely at this point, so I wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you. High school doesn't look like any, well, it's a little busy outside, so I think we'll just, does anybody have anything they want to share? If, it's just easier to do it that way. All right, thank you. Board policy, none tonight. That takes us to general business. Item number one, the Brandon Valley School District, 24, '25 preliminary budget presentation. It's presentation only, no action.
Welcome to the 35th time I've done this. I'm so doggone old. I looked at my laser pointer, and on the laser pointer, it says Radio Shack, for crying out loud. That's how many years I've been doing it. First slide is, I've kind of turned this 24, '25 budget as a recovery budget, recovering from two years of enrollment shortfalls, kind of finishing off the COVID hangover of those funds coming in. Those are completely gone now, so it's recovering from a number of things, mainly those budget shortfalls. The general fund is, shows $40,749,000 of revenues and $40,665,000 expenditures, with a slight surplus of $84,000. Capital outlay fund is $9,375,000 of revenues, just under $6 million of expenditures. That'll be a surplus of $3.4 million in the capital outlay fund coming off the high school addition project. In addition, don't forget that we purchased $3.6 million worth of land out of our current monies. That was, wasn't even in last year's preliminary budget. We got that in under the, when we approved the final budget. Special ed, as I talked just in the financial statements, $10.5 million of revenue and $10,991,000 of expenditures for a half a million dollar deficit next year. Bond redemption fund, $3.3 million of revenue and expenditures. And child nutrition, $3,765,000 of revenue, $3,989,000 expenditures, $225,000 deficit. That is including, we're, I think I saw that on the agenda, proving an increase in the meal prices this year. So it's a total of $67,751,000 of revenues and just under $65 million of expenditures. The general fund budget, the funding formula, I'd like to go through that each year just to show everybody how it's derived by the state of South Dakota. It's based on that top number, 5,080. That's our projected enrollment from next year. This year is 5,017, so it's plus 63 students is what I am projecting in there. So it's all driven by your enrollment. They take that divided by, for large schools, divided by 15. Student/teacher ratio is arbitrary ratio that they throw into the formula. It says we should have 338.67 FTEs of teachers. And then there's a factor that we get additional staffing for ELL students. Very little staffing, .4%. We have four ELL teachers and three EAs. We're being, and revenue is based on .4 of a teacher. 339 total FTEs. And then the targeted instructional staff salary is $62,000. The benefits are just under $18,000. They figure that at 29%. At Brandon Valley, that number is 34%. So we're pretty flush in that benefit category for a total salary and benefits of $80,039, times the total number of FTEs that they say we should have. Total salary and benefits need of $27,138,000. The overhead is calculated on this percentage of 38.8%. A number, once again, just kind of arbitrarily picked out by the state of South Dakota, gives us an additional $10.5 million of need. Total need, $37,663,000. You take away what you can generate at the local level in property taxes, those levies are set by the state. So whatever your property tax levy is, they add that total up, and that comes to $13,118,000. And then lastly, they take away the other revenue equalization. And that's fully equalized now, but the bummer about that is it's a year behind. So remember I told you that we were down $200,000 in our bank franchise tax? We won't recoup that until '25, '26, because then $1,922,000 will be last year's number, so it'll, it'll take a year to, so when they say it's fully equalized, it's fully equalized, but on a drag. So our total state aid would be $22,622,254. Questions on the funding formula? It's a long way around a per-student allocation. Is basically what it amounts to. It's just coming at it a different direction. Staying on the general fund, the instructional budget is $25,761,000. It's 63.4% of our total general fund budget. The average in the state of South Dakota is 56%. So what that tells me and should tell you that we're plowing all the money we possibly can into the classroom. I'm very proud of that, 63%. I've always shot for 65% total there, but when I looked up the state averages and stuff, I was very proud of that, 56% average in the state. Support services budget, which does include, in my mind, some instructional-type areas, guidance counselor, library, nursing, things that I would consider instructional, but they're under the support services budget. That's just not administration, is what I'm getting at. 33.6% average in the state of South Dakota is 39%. Activities budget is $1.1 million, 2% of our total budget, 2.7% of our total budget. The state average is 4.6%. And then we have a little early retirement number there, $131,000, .3%. Average is .4% in the state. So I, we're doing very well on where we're putting our money is what that's telling me. 24, '25 enrollment projections, as I said, we're projecting us to go up 63 total kids. The first slide is the elementary, and you can see on the totals there that it's plus only 13 kids. Very stagnant elementary enrollment. Not a lot of growth. It's conservative. Been bit two years in a row. Makes you want to be conservative. So I have plus 13 there, plus 30 in the middle school, and plus 20 in the high school, for a total of 63 new kids. As I said, fairly conservative. We should, no problem making that. The general fund, different categories compared, last year compared to this year, year-over-year detail. The instructional budget, $25,760 this year, $25 million last year, plus $710,000, 2.8%. Our support services budget went down 1.3%. Early retirement payments went down 20%. Our extracurricular activities went up 10%. Majority of that is pretty substantial increases in travel costs and event workers. It's just officials and workers just costing a lot more trying to get those people. So our but, total general fund budget is only up this year 1.5% expenditure budget, which was very much needed, recovering from previous. That $591,000 is summarized, general summarization here. Salary, 4.25% increase across the board, $1.1 million. We had a little reduction in benefits. The cutting of two in-service days, which we actually did in '24, '22, '23, '24, realized in it this year. The operational savings of closing Valley Springs amounted to about $250,000. Went down one FTE in our kindergarten this year. Had some retirement staff savings of $70,000. Utilities are up $180,000. And early retirement payments were down, as we saw before, $35,000, and just a little bit of reduction in supplies and materials. So that's an overall, it's not exact, right on the number, but that $591,000 is reflected in those categories. Next slide just shows our total number of FTEs versus our enrollment. It is a little positive for '24, '25, because we added three positions in the special ed department. The next slide is the per-people allocation and the percent increase in state aid throughout the years. This coming year, '24, '25, the per-people allocation will be $7,405. That's after a 4% increase in state aid. We've had a, I mean, when you look at the percentage increases in state aid, we've had a pretty good run here lately. That was when Governor Dukard put the great big increase for teacher salaries in there, and then, I don't know, probably averaging close to 5% the following years. The next slide is the cost per pupil of the various schools across the state, the large schools. You can see that Brandon Valley is very efficient in this chart. A couple of schools a little bit lower. You know, everybody gets funded on the same formula. That second slide that I went through, everybody's funded on the same thing. So you say, "Well, why aren't these all straight across?" Three factors. General fund opt-outs, that five of these 14 schools have. Those are passed by the public that they opt out of the general fund formula. Federal revenues are another category that can affect it. And then lastly, the biggest thing would be capital outlay fund transfers. We transfer, in '24, '25, we're transferring 1.5 million. That is a, we're very fortunate to have the kind of valuation increases that we have, because there's a number of schools on here that are very capital outlay poor. Can't afford to build many things at all. So they don't have any capital outlay transfer that allows them some flexibility there. But they may have an opt-out too, and federal revenues. So those are the three things that affect that. General fund, fund balance. First graph is the dollar amount. Projected to end this year, '23, '24, right at $7 million. If we can get that expenditure budget to come in at 1.5 or a little bit better percent under budget. And ending '24, '25 at 7.2 is what I'm projecting. And those two numbers would be right at 18%. Now if you look at that, that up and down thing there, if you flatten that out, it pretty much looks like it's going to flatten right on the 20% line item there. And our strategic plan as a board is no less than 15%. So I'm projecting we'll be right at 18% at the end of next year. The general fund revenue, where it comes from, Local taxes amount to 34% of our total revenue. State aid amounts to just under 59% of our total revenue. That operating transfer unit of 1.5 amounts to 3.7% of our total revenue. But look at our federal revenues, less than 1%. They did very little, and I don't even know exactly what they're out there. They still haven't published some of them. I got some of these published on May 1st, so I scrambled to get them in. They were all down just a trifle, but my spec ed numbers aren't published yet. I got some numbers. I promise not to tell anybody, total promise to you. So it's just very stagnant in our federal revenues. Then the other revenue slide, although equalized, as I said before, it comes into, comes into play. The next, is it coming up, Jer? Next slide. Coming up, Jared, next slide. Uh, still comes into, whoops, past it. Uh, the three, uh, categories are gross receipts, bank franchise, and county apportionment. County apportionment stays pretty, pretty equal, and you can see gross receipts have stayed pretty level at 700 and some thousand. Set that, bank franchise tax, it takes pretty huge fluctuations. I mean, that was a difference of over a million, down to 800,000. 200, that has an effect even on us. We'll get it back, it'll just be a year down the road. Next, the capital LA fund budget, uh, just under 6 million, we're projecting the expenditures this year. Uh, 1.5 million in transfer to the general fund. 167,000 dollars of classroom furnishings, co-curricular 110,000. Technology is down this year. Major item there is, we extended the year of our high school MacBooks one year from four to five years. So that was, enabled us to have a down year in the technology. Facility improvements, just over a million, that's a normal number for us. Maintenance equipment, 152,000. Transportation, 500,000. Fine arts equipment, 96,000. Debt service, 1.4 million. We will be issuing capital LA certificates for our new east side school this year, sometime this year, or next year, '24, '25. Trying to figure out the best way, and, and it, there's going to come a point where we got to do it, because we, we'll need the money. Uh, but that's what I'm projecting for our interest cost there, so it'd be a total of 1.4 million dollars. Printing services, we spend 100,000 dollars a year, and textbooks and library books, just under 600,000. That was the social studies adoption, we approved a meeting or two ago. Capital LA fund debt service, I just talked about, we have some capital LA certificates on the Brandon Valley Intermediate School, 540,000 dollar payment, and I'm projecting 860,000 dollar payment on a 35 million dollar issuance of certificates. It'll be third quarter that we'll, uh, that we'll issue certificates, July, August type timeframe. You know, we're hoping for an interest rate reduction in there. It's kind of the worst scenario, I guess I'll say right now, we run these numbers every two weeks. And, uh, it's kind of the, I shouldn't even say it's the worst scenario, because it can get worse. But, uh, I don't foresee it being substantially different from that 860,000 for this first year. Special education budget is the next chart, total expenditures, expenditures of just under 11 million, 10 million, 991,000. Uh, last year, 9,568,000. A 15% increase in our budget expenditures of 1.4 million. Uh, we, we. Yeah, go back one, please. Obviously, when you're going up 4% in state aid, we've had a couple of years here where of 10, 15%. Uh, that, that's crumbling into that special education fund pretty dramatically. Uh, it's not sustainable for us to do that, we're going to have to, number of things that will be, uh, available to us, the fund, the fund balances is or will be depleted here pre, in a year or two. Uh, we'll have to tap into what the state of South Dakota terms as the extraordinary cost fund avenue for those districts that are having extraordinary special ed costs. That and trying to control expenditures. The revenue in special education is the next slide. 58% local revenue, 32% state, and 10% federal. We really could use more federal money, we really. We get, I was just going to say, we get a million dollars in federal revenue. But they didn't ask me. The next slide is the best slide of the entire 2425 budget, it's the bond redemption fund. 3,337,000 dollars of expenditures calculated for, with that. You can see the various issues that we have, the intermediate school, Inspiration Elementary, and Fred Assam Elementary. The management of our, of our, uh, district-wide debt service, it's just been phenomenal, it's been very, very good. That's all I can say. And that's, that's a big deal for you as a board. I mean, you can look that taxpayer in the eye and say, you've done with the right thing there. Two years, Fred Assam and the high school will be paid off. 60% of our levy is coming off in two more years. That's, yeah. I, I'm just very, very proud of that, and you guys as a board should be too. I'll show you a slide in a little bit here that'll, uh, reiterate that. The property tax valuations. Yep. Uh, 4 billion 50 million. That was like giving out my first and only child to get that number too. It's just, all numbers have seemed to be pushed back, it just, I think it's a wave over sus, our society, that everything is just slower and slower, it just, I always had these numbers given to me earlier times in this. So we'll be projected at 4 billion next year from 3.6 billion this year, an increase of 420 million, 11%, 11.6%. Our increase probably larger than 50% of the school districts in the state, just our increase. You can see the, on the next chart, the increase in valuations over the years, where we've come from, in the year 2000, a half, a half, uh, next chart, Jared, uh, half a billion, or half, 500 million in 2000, up to 4 billion this year. Uh, the chart shows that each annual percentage increase, uh, from the years, I mean, you look at those last 10 years, it's averaged, uh, I figured 11% over the last 10 years increase, and that's total increase. We don't capture all of that increase, we only capture the true growth. But, uh, substantial, that helps on our bond issues. You're spreading that tax base out over a larger area. Mill levies is, uh, projected for next year on the next page, all dropping down the state mandated, uh, general fund ag, general fund owner occupied, and general fund commercial are all set by the state. Capital LA fund is set by you guys. Spec ed fund is the maximum set by the state, and then our bond redemption fund is set by you guys. So we have a projected total ag levy of 5.9 mills versus 6.2 last year. Uh, anywhere from 5 to 8% decrease in the mill levies. Doesn't necessarily equate to a 5 to 8% decrease in taxes, depending on what happened to your property valuations. Uh, you know, that 11% increase doesn't come from, out of the air. It's not all growth, but, uh, it's a good sign that, that the levies are going down. The last chart is, I just drew in here, the metro area schools, Brandon Valley, Harrisburg, T, and Sioux Falls, the total valuations of each of those school districts. These are two-year-old data, because that's the newest I have available to me. 3 billion at Brandon Valley, 4 billion at Harrisburg, 1 billion at T, and 16 billion at Sioux Falls. The mill, total mill levies per thousand in each school, I'll just run across the owner occupied, the, the house, 8.28 at Brandon Valley, 11.86 at Harrisburg, 10 dollars and 66 cents at T, and 9 dollars and 37 cents at Sioux Falls. So substantially lower than any levy in the metro area. Total debt. GEO debt is the first one, and capital LA debt is the second one. Total debt in the general obligation, uh, bonds is 27 million at Brandon Valley, 209 million at Harrisburg, 70 million at T, 203 million at, uh, Sioux Falls. And then certificate debt is 5 million at Brandon Valley, 7 million at Harrisburg, 15 million at T, and 73 million in Sioux Falls. So that's what I was talking about earlier on the slide of debt management. We just have not built until something rolled off, which is very commendable, guys, very commendable. That's all I have, entertain any questions? I said I term it as a recovery budget, and we're getting everything we want to get done, done, I believe. Not everything, I'm sure there's a principal or two out there would disagree with me, but it's pretty good shape.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard, for your presentation this evening. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve items two through six. There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve items one through 22 under personnel, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Items 23 through 30 are there for your review information only. Building app, permit applications, there were none for our area. Board of Education, there are a couple thank you notes there from a couple staff. Um, that takes us to board reports, does anyone have a board report that they would like to share this evening?
I don't have a report, but, um, this goes back to yesterday's event of commencement. Although I only probably shook hands and congratulated about 20% of the kids, I would like to congratulate every one of those kids, and also congratulate the staff from custodians to administration, to the band, everybody that put this together, it was a stellar event, and, uh, you couldn't, found a better bunch of kids to get graduated, so that's all I had.
Just to piggyback off of that, I've had more parents from this year's class come up to me and said, is this how it's always been? How amazing the, the ceremony was? So it was reassuring that we are doing something right, so, thank you.
I guess it was, um, interesting for me to hear that they were the class that started out in quarantine and going the hallways, I mean, it's like, that's been four years already? So it, it's amazing how fast life goes, so don't blink or you'll miss it. I think that's a quote from an old Ferris Bueller movie. Any other formal board reports tonight? With that, uh, we are at the end of our meeting. Again, like Dr. Larson said, there's a celebration on Saturday at Valley Springs, please come out. Um, we're nearing the end, so the end is near, and, um, kids can start enjoying this summer, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, and thank you everyone for coming.